All right, so I sent the link to Jenny and the live stream is going.
All right, good deal. Well, we'll go ahead and jump in here. Call the meeting to order. Debbie, do you want to do roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
And Ms. Bachelor?
Here.
All right, and Bonnie, would you like the latest in the pledge?
Sure. Thank you. Eddie, where's our flag? You ready? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
All right, that was a little choppy.
That was not good.
Well, better than no pledge.
That's right.
Their pledge is better than their pledge.
Was anybody kneeling?
No.
Well, that's a plus. That's a plus.
We'll fire you if you do, Alan. Don't pull no Joey Votto on us.
So we'll go ahead and get in here. Eddie, do you want to review the rules for chiming in here real quick?
Yep, so if you are on the computer with us and you want to raise your hand or participate, you'll go to the participant panel and press raise your hand and we will acknowledge you and during that period or during the public participation period, if you're just on the phone, then you will press star nine on the phone and that will also raise your hand so that we'll know that you want to speak.
All right, thanks Eddie. So we have a couple of topics here on the agenda we're gonna cover and this is a, you know, public meeting. We welcome public participation, but we will cover our topics and then probably pause after each one and if anybody has input, we'll, you know, allow for that and then we'll have time at the end as well. So first on the agenda is old business, considering candidates for appointment of alternate to the zoning commission.
Is there any way to turn the volume up? I can hardly hear you guys.
Is anybody else having a problem hearing me?
No.
All right, probably on your computer, Debbie. I don't know. You have a volume button or any volume knob or anything on there?
I don't either.
Be able to hear us a little better?
No.
I'll come back.
Okay, thanks Eddie.
You know, nowadays with masks, I always, you know, see these Zoom meetings and I feel like I'm at the doctor's office. It looks like I'm laying on the table and they're operating. They blacked us out. He's dead, Jim.
Debbie, yours never was very loud.
Better?
Okay, yes, that's good.
All right, all right. So consider candidates for appointment of alternate to zoning commission. Where are we at with that?
Wait for Eddie to get back to the room, his room. Okay.
All right, Eddie?
Yes.
We're talking alternates to zoning commission. Where are we at with that?
Okay, so if you don't have the list, I can share the list for you, but we're just fielding a motion or discussion on the current set of applicants.
Okay.
Would you like me to share the screen or do you guys have your copies?
Go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead and share the screen just in case?
Okay.
We don't have any personal info or anything on these that is sensitive to sharing?
We have, well, we have phone numbers. We have phone numbers and addresses.
I will not want to do the phone number.
Okay.
Let's not do that.
Let me see here. I might be able to. Let me see if I can. I'll, let me just, I'll cut that, some of that stuff out real quick so we can. Are you able to see that screen now?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Eddie.
You're welcome.
All right, so yeah, I got these applications as well. So is this something we want to try to discuss further and decide on today or should we put this off to the next meeting?
Eddie, can I ask, you have any of these people served before?
To my knowledge, they have not.
I didn't think so either.
Remind me again, Eddie, because I think a couple of these actually had served on the Amelia zoning commission. Is that correct?
I believe that at least one of them has. I can try and confirm that if you'd like. Yeah, Quail Creek condo association, I think, was one.
Yeah. Was that Gongwar or was that?
That was Ms. Gongwar. That's correct.
Okay. But no, but no one, I'm remembering incorrectly that one of them was on the Amelia zoning commission, correct?
I can confirm which person that may have been.
If you, I can always go grab the file. I just don't have it with me here.
I think you're right, Alan.
We had an interim trustee for Monroe Township.
Which one was that?
I believe that was Leroy Miller.
Really? Do you remember that, Bonnie?
No, I do not.
I don't either.
Entrant trustee. I thought Ed McCoy made mention one time, Alan, that one of the candidates served on the Amelia.
Yeah, I think he was, I think he was referencing Beverly Gongwar.
Okay.
If you would like any information on Jeff Higgins, I do know him personally.
Well, that just shot him down.
I know.
Way to go, Debbie.
Jeff was almost in until you said that.
Oh, darn.
What are your thoughts? I'm sorry. I'm just kidding.
Jeff is, he's retired. We always called him the sound man because he's good with audio and he traveled with Three Dog Night.
Excellent.
But no, he's done, he's actually from up around Lebanon and has moved here and he was big with trying not to get that senior living in over there off of Jenny Lynn. He was a big part of that and so.
How long has he lived here, Debbie?
Oh, gosh.
Years?
Years, yeah.
I did, when I looked through the resumes, Gongwar jumped out and I think Longbottom as well. Those two kind of jumped out. My recommendation is that since we've gone through it, I'd love to have the conversation with all of us and then we can make the vote at an official board meeting, if that makes sense.
Are you talking about executive session?
No, no, I was thinking that we can just kind of talk about each one of these applicants right now and kind of, you know, do a deeper dive on a few of them. Like I just found out more about Jeff Higgins than I knew before. I mean, I'm impressed that he traveled with Three Dog Night.
Yes.
And was that Jeremiah was a bullfrog?
Yeah.
It wasn't? Okay.
Yeah, and I even met him at his house one time.
Really?
I did.
Cool. Did you get his autograph? No, anyway, sorry.
I did on a bottle of wine because Three Dog Night put out wine and I got a bottle of wine.
Because I always helped him drink his wine, right?
Yes.
Eddie, can you tell us without divulging anything we shouldn't, what location each of these people are in the township so we can get a geographic idea where each one?
Yes. Okay, so we have, well, how would you like me to share this information? Do you want, some of these addresses, you know, the street address by applicant?
I can kind of cover it here if you want. We have three of them, we'll say, from the Merlin 10 Mile area.
Okay.
Still Meadow, Merlin, 10 Mile, that kind of that general area it looks like. We have one, I think Gangwar is from the more of the Village of Amelia area. And the only one I don't have in front of me is Jeff. I'm not sure where Jeff lives.
Jeff Higgins and a Lynn.
Jenny Lynn.
Loretta just brought me in a copy so I can see.
Yeah, so we have Longbottom, Miller and Randallall from, let's just say that Merlin kind of 10 Mile area, Gangwar from the Village area, I guess, and then Jenny Lynn for Jeff.
I guess in part I lean toward someone from Amelia because we don't have anybody from really that area, Amelia proper, the village.
And that's the reason I asked that, Alan.
Yeah, so it's kind of, I lean toward trying to do that geographically and as I kind of look through the paperwork, it did look like, you know, Beverly had some background in these issues, but it's also for the, it's also for the alternate spot, so that's a great place to kind of learn. So, you know, our zoning is a bit different than a homeowner's association or, you know, a village zoning commission, but it does give you the opportunity to sit there and participate and, you know, get your feet wet on that front. So that's kind of where I was coming down, but that's just me.
I know, I kind of agree with that. Beverly has also been, lived in that area for, it looks like, over 15 years. So she's been there a while. She has a little experience and she would, in theory, bring a little more representation to kind of that side of the township. All right, well, anymore, if we're done, whenever we're done discussing on this, I think it would be a decent idea. I guess we can push it to our next regular board meeting and then try to make a decision then. So what you guys want to do?
That's fine.
All right. Let me check and make sure we don't have any raised hands and then we'll move on to the next topic.
Nick, I'll just say out of the five, we've got Jeff Higgins or Beverly from that side of the township, so.
That's true. You're right about Jeff Higgins. I guess Jenny Lynn, that would be over in that direction too.
It's right next to Sedona.
Okay. Let's see here. We'll go ahead and move on to the consideration of candidates for appointment of Parks committee member. Do we want to do, try to do something similar here where we make that decision at the next regular board meeting? Or what are your guys' suggestions?
Well, I mean, I guess I always view these work sessions as work and this is where we can hash things out and discuss, you know, what actions we might take. So I kind of view this one as similar to number one, but again, just my opinion.
All right, me too. Do we have any discussion going on with this or?
Are we going to list the candidate, do we have candidates for this also?
We're right here. Unless Betty has additions, I believe the last two have.
Loretta, I can't hear you.
Sorry.
There you are.
The, I believe that we just had two candidates. That was Fontaine and Campbell. Mrs. Campbell has participated in at least one of the Parks meetings since she had shown her level of interest. I don't believe there's been any other participation from other new members. I don't know, I think Mr. Carpenter's on this call, so if he has anything to add to that, but I know that she didn't engage in at least one of the Parks meetings.
Okay.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, of the two candidates, I was leaning towards Campbell.
I was as well. It's been a little while since I reviewed it. That was prior to even our last meeting, but I recall kind of feeling the same way. All right.
So has he been involved anyway with the parks?
She.
She, I mean, I'm sorry.
And Campbell. She's attended one meeting. I think she has a more of a healthcare background perhaps, which could be.
Yeah, she is in nursing. I believe it's pediatric.
Could be a decent addition with everything we have going on.
Yeah, I think that's a good question, I mean, about Fontaine as well.
She has an environmental background.
Yeah.
They both sound like good candidates to me.
Yeah, I think so too. That's the beauty of it. We've got two good candidates to pick from.
Both of them have been added to the email list from the Parks committee, so they have been kept up to date with all of their information.
Now, please remind me, do we have just one position to fill at this point?
Yes, that's if you bring yourselves to the fullest compliment. You've had a vacancy for a very long time. It wasn't really until Mr. Carpenter brought it to my attention that I realized that you could add one additional person. So you did replace his position with Michelle Ballside last and then these were candidates that showed interest at the same time that she did, so they were being considered if you choose to add that additional position.
Be ashamed to turn away anyone that wants to serve on the Parks commission.
Yeah, I know. I feel the same way.
It does make me feel like adding another board seat, but.
That's my point. Can we do that?
Since it was our.
You can. You already, you had a vacancy that was never filled.
I mean, they both sound like good candidates.
Oh, you mean to bring two in?
Yeah.
I think you'd do that by resolution.
I think that we would have to do this as a two-step. So we'd have to pick somebody to fill that seat and then, and then a separate action, we'd have to create a new seat.
Yes.
But in many respects, the way that committee works, I mean, it's, everybody's involved, you know? So while only a handful of seats have official votes, it doesn't seem like they do a lot of voting, if that makes any sense. It's by consensus of who's in the room. So even if you're not on the board, you still have some say and involvement in how they do business, which is great.
So you can still, Alan, you can still attend the meetings and have participation?
Oh, yeah.
At the meetings.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty wide open process.
Yeah, I would personally be open to considering adding a spot. I'm just looking at both their resumes and they're both pretty great. I mean, they both seem like great additions. You want to consider at the next meeting maybe adding one and then considering a resolution to add another spot?
Yeah, I think I'd also like to, before we take an action like that, maybe run it by George or George and Doug and, you know, and that, and the whole crew and see what they think about adding another seat. I can't imagine that they would have an objection to it.
George is saying, George is saying he wants to make a comment if he can.
Yeah, that'd be great.
George, let's see here.
There, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just saying is, comment Alan made is true that we have a lot of workers that have contributed far more than any of the two candidates that are being considered. So there's really no restriction on somebody working on this. This is a working committee, so there's, we probably have more work going on than outside of meetings than anybody else. So the only thing that bothers me is taking people that have not been part of it and making them official. I mean, Lori, Dan Newmeyer, others are not members but have contributed immensely to this, to that committee. So being a member is not necessarily has any influence other than when it comes to voting or something in terms of how much gets done in that committee. So just my perspective.
Well, that actually raises a question that I have then. As far as the two applicants, did we just roll these two applicants from the previous seat? And or did we ask for new applicants to take this seat? In other words, do we open this up to Lori and others who might have applied but for the fact that we just rolled over previous applications?
Well, I know, Loretta, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to fill my seat, you put out a notice and got these applicants forward, of which Michelle filled my seat and we went back to the number of four people on it that's been on it for quite a while now. But the only concern I have is this committee has a history of everybody really doing a lot of work and when we take somebody that hasn't been involved that much, I just wonder if that starts to change the, you know, whole complexion of this committee or whatever.
Well, me too, because it could create hard feelings where you've got, particularly if we didn't post again for this seat. Now, Loretta, did we repost?
When we advertised, we knew that we had two seats to fill and you made the decision about one and deferred the decision about the other. So it wasn't a circumstance of re-advertising, but there were candidates that we thought would be able to apply that just were not at a circumstance in their lives to make that commitment yet. But we can certainly, because it's been quite some time now, re-advertise fresh.
I'd almost like to let, to George's point, I'd like to let people who have been active have at least their first right of refusal.
I agree with you, Alan.
Yeah, I agree as well. I was kind of under the assumption that we opened it up and everybody that wanted to apply had had the opportunity to apply, but if that's not true, then certainly we can ensure that everybody that, particularly members that have been active and participating up until now, have the opportunity to apply for this spot or spots.
Well.
Yeah, I don't think, go ahead.
I'm just saying, I'm 99% sure that Lori was asked and didn't feel that she could make the commitment, although she is at every meeting and has done yeoman's work, as you all know, on everything that's gone on in the park. She just felt because of how much work the committee does and all the things we had going that she couldn't commit to what she thought was going to be even more. But nobody has done more than she has in terms of supporting it. Dan is a close second and I don't know if he was actually approached or not.
Okay, well, in my opinion, I think we need to make sure whoever needs to know as far as active members, they know there's, at least we have one spot. So, you know, people that have been active and they just don't want to commit to this spot, then we have to make a decision. I mean, do we not want to appoint anybody there because the active members aren't interested in it? Do we want to appoint? I mean, but at the very least, I think we need to revisit and put our feelers out, make sure that all those that are currently involved in the Parks committee have been given the opportunity to apply for this.
Well, when the committee was set up, it was set up with five spots with a minimum, up to five, with a minimum of three. So there was no requirement that all five have to be filled. In fact, we operated for maybe the first two years with only three of us and then Randy Page, because of the amount of work he and Darlene do, were approached to join just because the amount of contribution they were making. As I said, Lori has been approached a number of times and although she works her heart out on this thing, just didn't feel she could make the commitment, because of health issues elsewhere in her family, so.
Well, that's fine. That comment stands. We need to figure out what we want to do. We want to fill that spot, leave it empty? Make sure everybody who needs to know about it knows about it and go from there.
Let's post this thing again. I don't know how far it went the last time, but let's post it and at least circulate, make sure we get it circulated to those people who are active on the committee. So an email with the announcement to each one of the members.
Could I make a suggestion that you ask the Parks committee members themselves whether they want to feel a need to add a fifth person to this or not with the candidates that have expressed an interest, just to see where everybody else stands on this thing?
Yes, yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, they're the ones that are most directly impacted by that kind of decision, so I think they should have some input here. I'm just glad you were on the phone, George. They're on the call today, so you could put your two cents worth in. It's been very helpful.
Good, thanks.
All right, thanks, George. Anybody else on this topic? I'm not seeing anybody. All right, any more discussion?
Do we need, well, the only thing I ask is, moving forward, is that we don't need a motion or anything, Loretta? We just say that's what we want done?
Yeah, I would say you've just given staff direction to re-advertise for candidates for parks and to communicate with Parks committee. Doug has his own emailing list as well, so we'll make sure that he shares that information and makes whatever notes he wants to to other folks who've been serving. other folks who've been serving in, in officially.
Right, and, and also to reach out to, to the Parks Committee to see if they think it's necessary or warranted to add another seat.
So at this point, we, we aren't ready to consider a resolution to add more positions to.
No, no. I'd like to get their input and see if they, if they even, if, if they even think it's necessary.
All right, I will take it one step at a time.
Sounds good to me.
All right, sounds good to me. So next on the, uh, business here is, uh, Eddie, you want to talk a little bit about the, uh, moratorium resolution?
Sure, yeah, no problem at all. Um, so in your package, you have a copy of the moratorium resolution. I've also included on the slide here as well. Just a brief rundown. It, um, due to the dissolution of Amelia, zoning commission asked us to do a little research and consider putting a moratorium on the, uh, transitional residential district in the interim so that we could perform the research and prevent, uh, new small lots from being created, as well as, uh, new dwellings and structures from being created, uh, being constructed in the TR district in the interim. So it's basically to give us a little time to study and review the area, just to make sure that the TR district is sufficient, or whether or not it needs to be updated to, um, reflect current circumstances on the ground. The, um, the moratorium basically has three, three major, three main components. One, it prevent, it, it would basically put a hold on new dwellings, multifamily, and those sorts of residential developments on, uh, on new small lots and that sort of thing. It would prevent the creation of new small lots, and it would also prevent, um, the creation of more TR zoning. So, for example, rezoning single-family residential to more TR, that would be put on hold. We included, um, a number of exemptions, uh, within, and those are, uh, you'll see in the body of the document, A, and then one. One is a set of exemptions, for example, as well as two, three, four, and then all the way down the line. So we tried to make it as narrowly focused as possible. One of the exemptions, for example, would be is if someone wants to build a fence or a shed on an, on an existing developed property, we would allow that sort of development to occur. Or if someone has a five-acre parcel in the TR and they want to construct a, a home, that would be something that would be allowed to, to proceed. But, um, just putting a hold on the proliferation of, uh, seven thousand square foot lots with dwellings on them would be, is kind of the main, one of the main targets. But if you have any questions, let me know and, um, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Eddie, Eddie, at some point, are we gonna do away with the, uh, transitional zoning?
Yeah, that, that's a big part of this research here. We're, you know, there are a number of circumstances where it's appropriate to have transitions from more dense areas into more suburban and rural areas. So it just, it's a context-sensitive sort of circumstance, and there may be some areas where some transition is necessary, or where our definition of what we consider transitional might change. We might look at this and find that a seven thousand square foot lot is just too small, um, or it might be too big. We, you know, all that sort of stuff is what we're trying to sort, and, and determine whether or not what, if what we have on the ground is appropriate, or the, or if the TR district even serves any purpose anymore. It, you know, the, the recommendations that might.
I wouldn't think that it would serve a purpose, because, I mean, the idea originally was to thwart annexation. Well, at this point, annexation doesn't exist, because, um, it's off, it's, it's bad, it's in Pierce Township. So I would think that all of that area would now be covered by our zoning. Is that not correct? I mean, therefore, it makes the, the TR kind of superfluous.
Well, the, the TR is one of our, is, is one of Pierce's districts. It, it wasn't in, in the former Amelia Village necessarily. Um, it just kind of buffered it. But you're right, it, it was, it was
Okay.
It, but you're right in, in that, you know, it, the purpose was to kind of prevent the annexation from swallowing up all of this Pierce land and everything, and that's def- I mean, you're, I think you're spot on as far as that, that's just definitely not, it's not possible. So, um, you know, we have some, some suspicions, obviously, and I think that we're mostly in agreement that it, that, that a significant update is needed to the TR district, and its original purpose appears to have gone defunct. There's no question about it. It's just a matter of what we replace, what we replace it with, and how we, how we want to update it and just make sure we get our, uh, research in order and get, get you guys' recommendations so that, um, we can better guide development in those locations.
Loretta, here, I just want to add though that there is some language that may cross-reference it associated with three hundred feet from a municipal boundary that could still apply to New Richmond. So that just needs to be, uh, considered at the same time as the TR district language itself. The TR district on the map is only showing buffering Amelia, but the language could also apply to any other municipal boundary, which would include New Richmond for us.
But I may not want to do a TR down there. I mean, given the fact that I may not want, I don't know what the zoning is in New Richmond, so I don't know how beneficial it is for a developer to want to annex into, into New Richmond versus stay in Pierce. I may want to have that negotiating power with them to remain. Makes sense?
Yep.
So right now, I mean, most of that border that we have with New Richmond is, um, is industrial zoned, correct?
Yes.
So, and most of that land probably would not be, you wouldn't switch it to residential, given the nature of it, right?
In all likelihood, that, that's, yeah, I think you're right. We, we do have some areas that border New Richmond that are, um, let me see here, I'm pulling it up now. I think we might have some single-family residential that borders. Not, not much at all, but, um, it is predominantly industrial.
And it, it would be all, it'd be that property, the properties that are down at the bottom upon ground.
Yep, you're right. So, New Richmond.
I certainly think it's worth. Go ahead.
Uh, well, I was just gonna say, New Richmond would definitely be part of how, um, the approach to reviewing this, to see if there's any, you know, how, how New Richmond would affect the relevancy of this zoning as well. Even though there is no TR down near New Richmond, uh, we can definitely look at, uh, New Richmond zoning and provide feedback on that as well, so that we all know, uh, kind of what we're up against.
Yeah, no, I think, I was, I was gonna say, uh, I, I think that all kind of spark, it kind of, um, reinforces the need, um, to go ahead and, and have the moratorium and do the, do our homework and then come back with an intelligent response.
Okay.
So I make the motion to, to, uh, to, uh, accept the, uh, um, the moratorium.
Second.
If anybody was asking.
Taking the motion?
Yeah, I'm making the motion.
Okay. Oh, flat out.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Bachelor?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes. All right, hopping into the, uh, one twenty-five corridor study, I guess, uh, Jay, you on? You want to start out here?
I'll, uh, I'm, I'm unmuting Jay here, so.
Yes, I was being muted.
No, keep him muted, keep him muted.
Yes, I would keep myself muted. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Hey.
I'm getting a reverberation, so sadly, I'm getting two voices of Jay.
You asked for it.
I was getting two of you earlier, Alan, so.
Uh, nobody wants that. Absolutely no one wants that.
That ain't better?
No.
Uh, I don't know. You don't, I think you might be signed in twice. Another location.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
I can also, I can remove your second sign-in if that's all right.
I think that's what happened. I apologize.
I'll see if that works.
I don't know. Echo has kind of made you seem more, you know, more godly almost. Yeah, it's a little more weight to your work.
Scary. I think you're good now, Jay. You do a little sound check.
How's that?
Good.
All right, bear with me, let me get the video back. Okay. How's that?
Yep.
Good.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Eddie, did you want to, I guess, do a little intro, or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll give it, I'll give a brief overview here. Um, so about a, about a year back, uh, the state Route one twenty-five corridor study was initiated um, in conjunction with, uh, uh, Mr. Stewart and Kleinger's group, uh, staff, a- a- as well as, uh, uh, Trustee Freeman, uh, were kind of the working group on this product. Essentially, the, the way that this is broken down is, um, there's a desire, there was a desire to essentially address traffic, land use, and just general development in the one twenty-five corridor area. And, and the approach that was taken here was to kind of take more of a, a node approach by, instead of maybe, um, looking at every, every linear foot of one twenty-five, that you kind of broke it down into four digestible sort of focus areas. Areas where we would say, hey, you know, we want to improve, uh, traffic circulation, curb cuts, as well as what, what can we do to drive development more, more focused into those particular areas? Uh, this study basically provides recommendations on traffic improvements, how to improve the flow in those areas, how to, uh, push economic development, and how to guide that development from a zoning land use perspective into, into a product, into kind of community, into neighborhoods and services and, and development areas that better serve the community in an efficient way. And so this is the, kind of the first draft of that study that breaks it down into those kind of three main components, the, the zoning land use, the traffic study portion, and then economic development, just how we can focus those four node areas. And, uh, I can yield to Jay, and of course, I'm, I'm available for any sort of questions or clarifications that you may have as well.
Thanks, Eddie. Um, and as always, just jump in and stop me a- as we go through this, um, I was just gonna give a minute or two of, uh, a little bit more background, picking up where, where Eddie, uh, left off, and then I've got some uh, pages that I'm gonna ask Eddie to go to, uh, you know, just for the, kind of hit on the high points. But again, if there's anything in this document, this first draft you want to talk about today, you know, uh, stop me and, and, and let's talk about it. And certainly I expect edits, um, you know, Eddie already sent over a memo with edits, so we'll, we'll get the edits made and hopefully get them back to you next week. Um, so like Eddie said, you know, our approach was a nodal development, uh, approach. Uh, you, you know, the reason I, I like these approaches, uh, for this type of, um, scenario is that when you have these really long corridors, uh, like you do on one twenty-five, they're really hard to wrap your mind around, uh, a- and really say, oh geez, how do we change it? And, and again, you know, the corridor is, most would agree, is, is tired, you know, from a aesthetic standpoint in, in many parts of it, and, and from a land use, from a hi- highest and best use. So, uh, it needs some attention, and, uh, you know, the best way to go about that, again, is break it up into bite-sized chunks and to prioritize kind of the key intersections, kind of your first dominoes, if you will, that we're trying to get to fall. Uh, a- and then we let the, you know, the private, uh, development, you know, uh, folks take over from there. So, uh, that's why we came up with the three nodes, um, and actually the fourth node on the east, called the Walmart down there, uh, we threw that in at the end, um, we did, we did traffic analysis, or Kleinger's did, for the first three nodes. It's Merwin Ten Mile, uh, what I'm calling Pierce Point in Lewis White Oak area. Uh, those were kind of the top three pri- priorities. We threw in number four, the Walmart, just, and we didn't do traffic on it just for budget reasons, and for reasons that it's so far out east, thank you, Eddie, uh, so far out east that, you know, although it has a nice anchor with Walmart and brings in a big regional draw, um, it's so far from two seventy-five that, um, we just really wanted to look at development and maybe get some zoning recommendations there. So again, that's why we kind of broke up, um, you broke up the corridor. Jay, Jay, if I could just interrupt, if I could just interrupt real quick, the, the other issue with, with node four is that there's a tremendous amount of, um, uh, potential for residential growth in that area. Um, it may not be, you know, in the next year or two, but I think it also i- is, is helpful to have some of this data, uh, collected, because if that were to take place, if, for instance, the Malk Farm turned into a subdivision that's, has been planned in the past, um, that could be a significant number of new homes placed back there, which would have an impact on the entire corridor. Um, certainly, uh, a, a, a traffic standpoint. Um, and so knowing, kind of getting that, that into the equation makes a lot of sense from a study perspective, uh, and getting out ahead of it. So that's, that's another reason why I think node four is important, perhaps not as immediately important as the others, but something to, to, uh, to keep in the back of our minds. Thank you. Um, a- and, and before we kind of, so those are the overview of the, the four nodes, and, and really the three nodes is what we focused on with the traffic and everything else. Um, before I jump into kind of the traffic section of this, of the document, you know, just to address real quick, why did we do the plan, you know, and how do you use a plan like this? Why just spend the money, uh, you know, for, for this kind of effort? You know, first and foremost, and Eddie hit, hit on some of this, y- you know, w- w- you know, the goal is to redevelop, you know, redevelop, you know, create revenue streams, um, to support services. Uh, this kind of plan, i- i- you really need to have something like this. Um, you know, when you go for OKI or other infrastructure funding, y- y- you know, um, and if you don't, y- you're, you're just not gonna get as many points and, and, and just not get as much credibility down there. So that's first and format foremost, particularly with spending the money on the traffic impact analysis, the signal warrants, et cetera. Uh, the other thing that, two other things, you know, zoning, economic development. Um, I've kind of laid out, you know, and working with Eddie and the folks, you know, the, the, you know, some recommendation to really take it to the next step. You know, we've been talking about, you know, doing a zoning resolution, I mean, all of us, I think, for, for a few years now. Um, and so this really serves as that, that planning document, uh, to, to kick off a lot of those concepts. Uh, and third, y- y- you, I hope you could, you can get a lot of, you know, use with, uh, you know, when you're meeting with developers, you know, and this is great info, and when you, when you're sitting, uh, across the table from a developer and, uh, you can give this, you know, you've started looking at it, uh, you set the direction and the vision on what we're looking for. Uh, they appreciate that, and they see that you have your act together. So that's how we use this document. That's why I spent the money on it. So with that, uh, Eddie, do you want to go to, uh, page nineteen? I'll just look at those, um, look at the traffic. So the first section that we just went over was just, um, we skipped over was existing conditions. You know, we put some kind of basic, um, you know, aerial maps in there. We put some utility maps, and we do have some edits coming. I, I know the utility lines, um, you can't really see well, so I'm gonna have Kleinger's make them, uh, a lot bolder, but so that's kind of just supporting info, educational, particularly for developers, et cetera. So what you're looking at here from Eddie is, is basically the three nodes that we did traffic study for. Uh, you'll see the, uh, uh, intersections, both, uh, signalized, you know, i- some of the existing ones, uh, some, some ones that were, uh, planned for, and that Kleinger's ran the signal warrant analysis to see if they were justified, uh, and they were, a- as the report says. Um, and so with that, what we did, and Eddie, you want to go to twenty-five now? Page twenty-five? So what we did is, when you do a traffic study, uh, for, whether it's a five-acre site or like this, uh, could be a forty-acre node, a collection of sites, we basically master-planned the site, you know, um, and so what that means is we look at that node, so we're looking at node one right now um, on your screen. So we basically master-planned that area, and we start saying, okay, what do we think, uh, are, are stabilized? I call it stabilized properties. You know, what's newer? You know, like the skyline, that's newer. You know, so we can probably assume that that's gonna stay there for some time, you know? So once we. So once we, we kind of ferret that out, we, we see, well, what's left and then we master plan it, you know, what's kind of older, what's not the highest and best use? What could be redeveloped? And, you know, so we, we put our developer hats on and as if we were coming in here and, and developing the whole thing and that's not gonna happen probably. But that's where we start looking at internal access roads, new curb cuts, you know, things of that nature, you know, we, we look at, you know, site constraints, you know, is there water courses, you know, you know, one of the nodes has the overhead utility line easement coming through. And so what we're doing is we're trying to build capacity, we want to say, hey, how many developable acres can we get in each node? We make assumptions on land use, what do we think it could be? And all that goes into the traffic analysis, you know, could be X acres of office and X acres of retail, those all have specific traffic counts. And, and again, the Kleinger's folks, they put that into their formulas and they create the traffic study and they do the signal warrant, you have to see if signals are warranted. Along with that, what we do when we make all these kind of master planning assumptions, if you look to the left, each of these three nodes, the following three pages, it's got a very high level cost estimate for you, which was part of the scope and, and a request from the township to do. Again, this I think helps you start to, again, wrap your mind around what generally, what, what cost for each node are we looking at? If you wanted to do some proactive funding, if you wanted to go for OKI or other funds, what could you go for and, and what level, what kind of local match might you need? So that's what that's looking at, it's high level down there. I will tell you that I, I had sent Eddie yesterday, I've got revised cost estimates from Kleinger's that are even a little bit closer to construction, well, they're closer construction estimates. So in the next draft, if you don't have those pages already, Eddie has them. We'll get them in the next draft, they're very similar, I, I think it, it pushes up the price on, on all of them by a little bit, but it's getting more accurate. So that was node one, a, as you can see, they're kind of a smaller node, but you want to go to, and, and there's now, one more thing, on node one here, there, there's no new traffic signal kind of in the build out plan, given its size and the, in the current traffic signal locations. One of the issues on this node, I'll, I'll point out was if you look at up on where, where Merwin comes up to 20, 125, this kind of splits jurisdictions. So in reality, you know, you know, we've discussed in our working meetings that you, you're gonna want to have a good dialogue with, with the township next door to, you know, is that, what is that, Union? I think it's Union Township, to make sure that you guys are on the same page, because the front part of that land is, is up in Union, so. Eddie, you want to go to the next page, node two? So node two, this is Colin Pierce Point, for lack of a better term, we can, we can call it something else if there's something more appropriate. But this is basically the, you know, you've got the, the newer development there, which has the, the cinema and the small strip center. So it's kind of got its kind of master plan in place, which is nice, you know, that's a, it makes this whole node unique, it kind of has that as an anchor. So we really focused on master planning to the right or to the east there. And again, we're just kind of showing how a developer may lay this out, you know, in terms of depths, what they look for parking and setbacks. So you'll see the little blue circles, those are kind of for our master planning purposes, those are development sites, you know, just so we can make some assumptions. There, there was a signal called for, you'll see that on the list to the left on the cost estimates in this node. This node is nice, you, you know, it's got a couple of these nodes are kind of small, one and three, this, this has a little bit of size to it, which is nice. And, you know, one of the challenges I'll point out for all three of these nodes, and it's very typical of this type of rural corridor, is that you'll notice on all three of the nodes that it, we, we, we don't have a lot of depth to work with, you know, it's very fairly shallow for the most part. Now, this one goes back a little bit, node two, but for the most part, we're up against, you know, usually single family backyards. You know, and that, that gets difficult to, for a developer or you to go acquire. So, you know, that's a challenge, it, it doesn't mean these nodes can't be redeveloped. What it typically means, it, it, it just takes certain types of developments and, and, and certain sizes of developments off the table, you know? I'd like there to be a little bit more depth, just so we could start talking a little bit more about residential, like mixed use, you know, where a mixed use project has a, you know, a little bit of residential component to it. That is certainly the trend and I think it's gonna continue going forward. So sometimes that gets tougher, I mean, you're talking about smaller level, you know, strip centers and standalone, you know, that, that don't need that super deep lot, okay? That's just a challenge we have on, on this corridor, so. So that's node two. And you want to look at node three? Eddie? And finally, you know, this, you know, there has a lot of history and story to this one, with the Lewis White Oak, with the, you know, former water site, the township owned piece, been trying to be redeveloped, as you know, it's very difficult, that, that one triangle type piece right now. So but this, again, this was probably, you know, it's a very small node and, and like Eddie said, there's a lot going on with this one, I mean, as you know, that there's, there's safety issues as you come into 125 on this one, there's traffic efficiency, you know, issues on this one and, you know, what we're calling for, and I'll, I'll say Kleinger's going through the, you know, the traffic is, is a realigned Lewis Road there to get away from that, you know, three point kind of intersection where it's a choke point up 125. And so when we looked at that as, as maybe the likely fix or a fix, we said, well, what are we left with from a development standpoint? And again, you can see there, the kind of development circles, you know, the sites potential. So it does create some, certainly there's, there's cost to the realignment, but I think this node is a little bit unique in that it not only helps with some smaller scale economic development, redevelopment, it could clean up a lot of just traffic issues and safety issues. I mean, so I think that's a big component. And that may factor into when you're, if you want to go for funding, you know, I don't want to speak for Kleinger's from a traffic standpoint, but you know, typically, we talked during our meetings that, you know, well, you may score better on this, you may pick up some safety points. You know, if, you know, based on crash data and, and this and that, so that may be a, a consideration for you from a timing standpoint. So that's kind of the traffic piece of this. Again, I, you, you know, if you've got specific traffic questions, I think you, you should have access to the traffic study, it's a fairly large document with a ton of data in it. I dropped the, I think the executive summary and a little bit more in this kind of summary document that we're looking at. Certainly you can dive into the, the full traffic study and, and if you have got questions, we can get answers from Kleinger's on that, but, so that's the traffic overview and that's kind of why we did it, this kind of, kind of directs us on, you know, what's gonna make it efficient? What's gonna make it developable, you know, and what's the infrastructure generally speaking that'll, it'll take to get there? If you want to do something in the future, so that's traffic. Any questions? Or move on to zoning and land use? You want to go to 41? Please? So as Eddie said, we, we certainly, I would say the smaller component of this study did look at land use and zoning. This, this was first and foremost, a, a traffic, an infrastructure kind of planning document. But certainly it's all interrelated, intertwined, we wanted to take the opportunity to, to look at zoning and, and, and land use and economic development as well to hopefully kickstart some ideas and maybe some action items for the township to consider. So the following pages here on those four or five pages or so, in, in the green boxes, that, that's where the zoning and land use recommendations are. You know, just to cut to the chase, I mean, I, and I use this term a lot in here, you know, the plans recommending that you use overlay districts, you know, one or more, as the kind of the, the main zoning framework, you know, the, you know, overlay district would be a, a new, you know, zoning district, new chapter, you know, in your resolution that would go on top of the existing or underlying zoning. And they would have a, a, additional layer of, of guidelines, regulations, okay? Sometimes they trump or they conflict with the underlying zoning district and that's usually on purpose, you know, because you want to, you know, typically improve on something, maybe make something, you may want to make something more flexible, frankly. So it trumps what's underneath it from a zoning perspective. Corridor development, you know, yeah, that's a very typical approach is to use zoning overlay districts, you know, I think your biggest question to consider from a, from a policy standpoint is do you want to put some type of overlay district over all of the corridor or most of it? Which is, which is done all the time, or do you want to simply put a, a overlay district and that special set of guidelines over the nodes? Or maybe the nodes plus, you know, feather out a little bit on each side. Both will work, you know, I think those are kind of some of the conversations for the, for the next steps after this plan. But basically the zoning recommendations, it, and they all apply to all three nodes, really, there, there's not that much uniqueness going on. And basically there, as you go through there and, and some of the illustrative photos, I mean, we're dealing with aesthetics, we're dealing with ideas for flexibility, you know, for parking, you know, you know, we, we want good looking quality development, but we want to balance that with, we don't want to, you know, certainly create, you know, too, too many regulations to where a developer will jump over us and go to the next community over, okay? So it's a balancing act, so you know, signs, landscaping, you know, you know, to look at that, you know, in your existing zoning resolution and see if you want to upgrade any of that for these nodes. Keep in mind, you know, part of this whole node idea is that, you know, you want to drive development and traffic people and dollars to these nodes and they're intended to be different, they're intended to be destinations. You know, so, you know, I do, I would recommend that you, you do want to, you know, potentially upgrade some of your existing, whether it's signage, landscaping, you have building design guidelines right now in the books, you know, which I think are at a adequate level for, for, for Pierce Township right now, I don't think they're too excessive. And I, I think you can get some good looking development out of them, I mean, so you have a lot of this already, just maybe reviewing it and, and upgrading some areas. Signs, for example, I, I think I remember, you know, you, you allow like really big signs right now in the corridor. And so that'd be like one of the first places I'd be like, well geez, I'd go along the whole corridor and, and, and tighten that down, but certainly in, in these nodes, you know, that's just one example, that, you know, just kind of fine tuning all those zoning pieces. From a land use standpoint, you know, again, that factored into the traffic study and the master planning. As I said earlier, most of these node areas along the corridor, with the entire corridor, most of it kind of shallow, shallow lots and, and that, you know, not horrible, but you know, just takes away from some of those bigger mixed use development possibilities. So I, I think you're looking at from a land use standpoint, you know, allowing typical community level, commercial, retail, office, medical office. If you can get a bigger lot assembled, you know, I would suggest looking at residential, if it's a piece, if it's a piece of a, a bigger project. You know, not simply an apartment project by itself, but if the developer came in with, you know, 15 acres and seven of it is apartments and eight of it is commercial, I'd be looking at that, you know, if, if I were sitting in your seat, so, and, and so, a lot of those recommendations, you know, kind of trying to, you know, say to the developer world, hey, you know, Pierce Township, we're open for business. We're flexible, but here's our vision. So land use kind of is what it is, I think the big takeaway from land use is, you know, if you look at your current land uses permitted in GB, your general business, there's probably a few in there that you'd probably, in my opinion, would want to take off the list possibly not allow either in the entire corridor or certainly in the, you know, in, in the nodes themselves, just not highest and best used type of stuff. So that's zoning and land use, I think there's a lot of actionable items that, whether you do it as a part of a whole zoning resolution update, or if you, if you're not ready for that, if you want to do this as a standalone chapter and say, hey, we'd like to get moving on this node idea. It's something you can do standalone, we don't have to do it as part of the whole resolution, so that's kind of nice, you know, you can put this on the books, you know, soon, sooner than later. And then the last thing, Eddie, could you look at 46, page 46? So lastly, economic development. There's one page, it's short and sweet, but that's kind of on purpose on my part, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, number one, there's less programs as time goes on, you know, to choose from. This certainly is just the, the basic ones, but I think if, again, if I'm sitting in your seats, this kind of blueprint that I've put out here in the green box, that's kind of, those are the steps I'd be taking, I think there's some things you can get going on, there's things you can do in parallel. You know, and again, there's nothing really shockingly new here, you know, certainly, you know, tax increment financing and CRA. TIF being the biggest one, I mean, that's gonna be your, your, your biggest tool, depending on the size of project, you know, that you get from a developer and, and use that as an incentive, if they need public infrastructure, you can provide that through the TIF to try to attract those development dollars. CRA, tax abatement, again, there are situations for bigger projects where you may want to combine a CRA and a TIF in the same project package, if you will. So I, I definitely consider those, if you get something with some good payroll, or not payroll, but, you know, jobs, job creation. Number three, incentivized zoning, just talked about that, but, but really trying to use zoning as an incentive. Again, that's where flexibility comes in, not being too, you know, too out there on parking, we want to be flexible on, on parking. Usually residential density is the big carrot here, you know, that's usually what a lot of communities play with in terms of offering developers, say, you know, Mr. Mrs. Developer, you give us this and we'll give you this much residential density. So that's usually how that's used, so I'd include it in an overlay district, you know, as, as some sort of format to, to how you would offer that. Just be aware that again, you may not use it a ton, because again, these are some shallow lots, okay? The last two, again, common sense here, but it's like strategic land acquisition, I'm sure you folks have talked about that potentially. That's, you know, that's going forward, that's a long-term strategy where, you know, if and when you find properties that go in distress, whether it's a tax foreclosure, tax lien, maybe worked out a deal, maybe somebody wants to give the township a break and sell their property, you know, at, at a discount. It's crazy, it's happened before, I've seen it, but you know, basically, long-term, you know, the township purchasing and you basically land banking future development pieces. I mean, if you look at, you know, the communities that have been the most proactive and I think most successful over time for redevelopment, this is usually part of the strategy. It takes a long time, you gotta be patient, a little bit luck in there. And it costs, it takes some money, but when, when you start controlling enough of the pieces of the puzzle, whether it's the whole piece or maybe three pieces and you work with a developer and they bring the other two or three, that can really put you to the front of the line for some of these developments, so I, I'd look strongly at it, if, if at some point you can swing it from a budget standpoint, you know? And then lastly, we, we talked about it, you know, the proactive infrastructure upgrades, you know, if you wanted to go for some funding, certainly that's a, that's a proactive mood, move where you're saying, hey, we're open for business, we're gonna put this local match in whatever, node number two and, and to try to spur and put the infrastructure framework in there and then, you know, have the developers, you know, you know, react and hopefully come into that, so. Again, nothing too new here on this, but again, this is what I would do, I mean, they're simple steps, there's, again, things you can do in parallel. There's things you could start next month, you know, next week, at least discussing if you wanted to, to kick the ball off, so. So we did look at ED, economic development, just to have a little bit of a, a game plan for going forward on that, so. Thank you for your patience, that's kind of the overview of it. Any questions?
Well, so if we, if we were gonna pursue any of this, I would assume the zoning overlay would, would be one of the initial pieces before incentive districts and things like that? Is there a order in which you would suggest?
I would, I, I think they can go close together, but I, I would start with zoning, because again, you, you may, if you're interested in, in putting some TIFs in place, that obviously you may want to follow the overlay district lines, you may want to go outside of them, but that may inform you on how big or small to make the TIF area. But they're very close together in timing.
If I might add too, what, one of the, kind of the easier ways to, to look at this document, and at least from my perspective, is if you look at the implementation. the implementation kind of recommendations, they're they're kind of broken down in the land use, economic development, that sort of thing, and this this page that we're on right now actually, you know, shows it, that that's really brass tacks, more or less, as far as what steps, you know, are we going to be taking to actually get all of this, you know, get get these projects moving forward? And so that those are kind of broken down into to real kind of bite sized sort of sort of action items, like you know, the zoning would be something like the old fashion, putting the overlay together, bringing it to the zoning commission, bringing it to the board of trustees, so that we can really hammer out details about what we're what we're looking for, how we're going to accomplish our goals, you know, that that's kind of, if there's one thing to really focus on it. My opinion, I I think that the implementation component is really helpful in that way.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't we do you'd want to do the zoning overlay and probably at least get some momentum, where as far as knowing that there's development on the near horizon before you start tipping, or no, you don't want to tip too early, right?
Well, what what I, I don't know if I put it in this document, I know we've talked about it at meetings, oh yeah, I did, and right there, that last sentence, number one. You know, talking about a springing TIF. Different attorneys call it different things. I think you can still do these, I mean, we I've used these before, where basically there's language in when you put the TIF in the TIF resolution. Basically, it basically, the thirty year clock, assume you do a thirty year deal with the township, with the school district. Thirty year clock doesn't start ticking. And let's say out of twenty acres, a five acre development comes in, so the TIF would just start collecting and the clock ticking on that five acres. The other twenty five acres is still waiting. So normally, yes, if you do a normal TIF, you would not want to put it on yet. But I would look at a springing TIF to have that in place.
But again, it it depends on the development to some degree. You know, we'll go through, you know, I think you 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 have to get the zoning in place and then it educates kind of what you want in that particular node. And, you know, we may decide that a certain node.
Did we lose Alan or is it just me?
Yeah, we lost him, we lost him.
Well, RIP Alan. Moving on.
Oh yes, zoning first, I mean, no doubt, zoning is going to really direct a lot of your next steps. You know.
Eddie, you want to, as a sidebar, try to look into what's going on with Alan?
Yep, yeah, no problem, I'm I'm texting him right now.
All right, well, and then should we also consider? Well, I guess if zoning might be one of the first steps, we do need to update our overall land use plan, right Eddie? Sorry to make you multitask.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right, and and just kind of, I I thought, I think you made a really important comment earlier, you know. One of one of the things, I think, kind of speaking to the importance of of this document in general, is, you know, we want, we want to spur development, that's that's a given, but we don't want to spur development that doesn't conform with, you know, the vision of the community, so if you don't have the the kind of the regulatory filters in place and the plans in place, you might get development, sure, but is it the kind of development that, you know, we're we're looking to build on over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, that sort of thing, so that, so you're right, I mean, as far as having the the zoning, the other plans kind of in in the works and in place is a really important part to run in conjunction with the financing and everything to that effect.
Hey Jay?
Yeah, yeah.
We need to add a a chapter about better high speed internet for the township. Okay, okay, okay.
Jay, somehow you, you, I got another person that asked to admit it was Jay. I thought, well, that could be Jay, or it could be another Jay, so I let him in, now we got two Jays again.
I didn't do anything, so let's see.
You're good now, no, 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 the other one disappeared, but your voice just echoed for a minute and there's.
I heard that, I heard that, that's weird.
All right, well. We're good.
It's the evil Jay. Just real quick, like, can you go to forty five, page forty five, one back? I I I didn't hit on this, but this is a big part of of what I'd be looking at as well, you know, I'll call it access management. That's basically, again, it's a, it's a very key corridor tactic. If if you read the executive summary, the the traffic impact study, I I think it said that in the no build scenario or the or the master plan build scenario, either scenario state route one twenty five has traffic, you know, level of service issues, okay, particularly taking lefts out along certain areas, you know, that exists today. Access management basically is a variety of tactics for when new development or redevelopment happens, you do things like combined driveways, you have those reverse frontage roads, where you have the frontage road out front along one twenty five. You have cross access easements that are required, you know, when they come in for their individual site plans. So I I didn't want to gloss over this, this is going to be a big part. I think of the strategy to, not only from a redevelopment, but from a from a traffic flow. Keep in mind that from a corridor development standpoint, the ones that are not successful typically have tons of traffic, which is good on one hand, but when they don't do access management, long term redevelopment is not going to happen or go the way you want it to, because people can't get out. You know, and they're going to avoid those areas and developers are going to avoid putting a ton of money in those areas. If if the traffic doesn't flow, if I can't get my customers in and out efficiently, so it's a big component. It gets a little murky because you're a township, you know, and you know, state route and you've got, you know, ODOT to deal with, you've got county engineers. And so in terms of a jurisdiction standpoint, I I think there's, you know, for Eddie and I talking about this, if you want to pursue some of this, certainly some little bit of research and discussions with ODOT in in the county. In terms of, okay, who has jurisdiction over what? If the township wanted to enact some of these items, say, in the in the overlay district, how far can we go? You know, just to understand the limits, okay? But again, I I wanted to mention this, because it it's a very, very important piece of the overall kind of blueprint, if you will. Particularly on one twenty five, where the study shows that that you we've got traffic problems today. And and you're just going to get worse, so. And these, I told Eddie, these typically, these are not great conversations typically, to be transparent, you know, when you when these users and developers come in. Not every time, but you know, you know, these are tough conversations, you know, when they're coming for the site plan reviews. To say, hey, listen, you can't have two curb cuts, you can't have three curb cuts, you know, or you're going to have one curb cut and it's going to be shared with that person over there. That person's an empty field, well, when that person gets there, you guys are going to combo up. So, you know, this is where I was telling Eddie, I'll tell you, it's like, this is where it kind of tests your fortitude. You know, from a trustee standpoint, from a zoning commission, if they have any of this jurisdiction, from a plan approval. I I'd hold tight on some of this stuff, because it really has to happen, and I'm sure you've been around greater Cincinnati, there's 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 examples along all kinds of corridors where, you know, communities have done this, it just takes a while. And you're going to get into some contentious discussion sometime, but certainly it needs to happen. Any other questions on the document? Certainly, if you have edits, again, I've got several pages from Eddie, I I will, you know, you can email me or email them to Eddie. We'll get the, we got some map edits, I I think when we started doing these maps, there was still Village of Amelia, so we'll some of those maps up front, we'll take that off of there. And then hopefully, as long as there's not too many edits, I'm probably easily get this to you next week, you know, second version, for you to look at. Second draft.
Sounds good. All right. Any other comments, public participation?
I can give a little brief rundown real quick, too. If you want to raise your hand, you go to the participant panel and press raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, just press star nine. You can also message us on the chat if you if you want to speak or send a message.
Thanks Eddie. All right. So.
Right here, if I could just suggest that I'll put this under old business for updates to continue when we have our August twelfth meeting, and then perhaps if we have all of the edits made, then you can basically blast the document. We can add it to our website at that point.
Sounds good.
Nick, I see at the bottom, it said under chat, it has one up there, does that mean someone has added something? Or does it mean?
I think it's still George.
Oh, okay.
Does that, my chat, the chat room is is empty on mine.
Okay.
You're right, no, good, good call, though, I didn't even see that, yeah, it does look like that was George. All right. So you want to go ahead and, I guess, pop out of this, we'll pull the agenda back up. All right, I think we've covered most of this, I guess. We got public comment unless there's any other discussion on that topic, then we'll just do general public comment and probably move to adjourn, I guess, does any Bonnie or Alan or Jay or Eddie or anybody have anything else?
We do have other business.
Yeah, we have, we have one last item on the on the long range planning, we've got a a proposed survey that I can just touch on really quick, we we sent over some drafts and everything, but I can just give a brief Reader's Digest version and then we can we can jump off if that's okay.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead and mention that one of the things that was on our list to do was to do this community survey as we consider the responses and scoping work to continue where we can integrate the corridor and the former village of Amelia into this thinking and into this work. So Eddie has drafted survey questions, we've gone over it a couple times, it's not in final form, it's just in draft so that we can gain your feedback and hopefully by the first day of August or so, we'll be ready to launch that survey, get it out to the community. It focuses on the former Village of Amelia territory, but it would be a survey sent to all of the Pierce community that we reach with our website, with circle, every way that we can. So after we had that feedback, that would help us refine our our scope of work as we continue the corridor study then for one twenty five through Amelia, just to introduce that work, so again, this is rough draft and then we'll refine it and consider it further.
Thanks, Loretta, so the, basically, the purpose of the survey, Loretta covered it, it were we're going to use it to, well, for one, get to know Amelia, allow folks in Amelia to kind of really give us feedback in general about their community, so that we can become, you know, more intimately involved with kind of with everything, all the issue, you know, any issues they may have, their their vision of the community, those sorts of things, just to begin that conversation. And the other purpose is primarily to better hone our future long long range planning efforts to better focus our scope scope of work in order to make sure we get the most out of future planning endeavors. The way that the survey was broken down was kind of was the three main components, one was the culture of the community, just so we can kind of begin getting a pulse on the culture of the community from residents' perspective, commercial, economic development sort of perspective as well, what kind of businesses? Would you like to see, what 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 don't you like commercially and that sort of thing in Amelia, as well as trying to get an idea as as far as perceptions on public services. Different projects, you know, branding, streetscaping, that sort of thing, what 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 can we do to to better focus our efforts, better serve the the Amelia community? And and we're going to put this into kind of like Survey Monkey sort of format, we're going to broadcast it through Facebook, as as Loretta said, in various different sources. But the other the other part that's that's really important as well, is we want to craft it in a way so that we, there's there's information that we can track a few years down the road as well. So some of the questions, you know, it'll be interesting to see how their how perceptions have changed since from twenty twenty and then say in twenty twenty five. We can kind of retest the waters and see, hey, have we have we been addressing some of the issues, have we have we kind of met met some of the challenges head on, are perceptions changing, are things improving, that sort of thing? So we're we're trying to be cognizant of that as well, but again, we're going to try and launch this next month, hopefully run it for about thirty days. Try and get as robust of a response as we possibly can, and we'll also be working with Jay during the process as well, to make sure that we're we're all on the same page and kind of pushing in the same direction. But if you have, you know, if you have any questions or comments of over the next couple of days, if you could, you know, get those over, that would be, that'd be great, and we'll get it refurbished and and kind of sent sent back out, and I think that Mr. Carpenter wants to speak as well.
All right, Eddie, I think that's a great idea, obviously, I'd already looked over that, so. Let's see here. Okay, George, you there?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm assuming you went back and looked at the community survey we did back in, I think it was two thousand fifteen on questions, because the intent back then on that survey, which I organized, was also to be able to track perceptions on police, fire, services, roads, other things, so if we could make some of these questions the same or similar, we have a historic benchmark that's not starting today, but starts with perceptions in two thousand fifteen, if we gotten better, we gotten worse, whatever. I mean, that last survey really formed the basis of where our priorities were on the parks, for instance. So that's all I have, just to make sure we didn't lose that.
Yeah, what I can do is I will, I will take a look over that and also reach out to you if if you if you're available, so we can discuss, just make sure we're on the same page with that.
Okay.
Anything, of course.
Sure.
One of the surveys that we did consider, we 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 kind of did a broad stroke, just general, looking at what other some other communities maybe, you know, outside of the area have done. We also, Amelia proper had done a survey back in the early two thousands as well, so we we took some of that into consideration as well, but twenty fifteen survey, we'll definitely take a look at that. And we we just, we actually received a comment just now, as far as making the survey available to folks who don't have access to Survey Monkey, we we can definitely make accommodations for that. It's generally, it's generally kind of the industry standard as far as surveys go, but I can look into making, you know, making reasonable accommodations for 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 anyone who might want access to a hard copy or something to that effect.
Just kidding with you, Eddie, or whatever, email you, call you, whatever, you can probably figure that out.
Yeah, well, what we can do is we will make this available, like, so Survey Monkey in in the digital component is is a really, is a really big reach. What we can do as well is when we launch it, we'll have hard copies available upon request, where we can set them out in the breezeway. And so someone can come up and pick up a hard copy and drop it off, we're ideally, we would get as many responses digitally as we can, because each, you know, the responses are tallied and everything to that effect, so it cuts down a little bit on some of the clerical tallying efforts and things of that effect, but we can still make, you know, hard copies available, because we, the most important thing is getting the responses, that that's kind of the key, we we can make do.
We did have, we actually mailed the survey to everybody, which gets a little bit expensive back in two thousand fifteen. We use Survey Monkey, the people that dropped them off, and I recall there was a significant number, I think I believe Laura put those one by one into Survey Monkey, so that it would all tabulate together, and you could get the together, uh, and you could get the report formats out of Survey Monkey with that.
Good. Appreciate it, George. All right, anything else?
If we can bring back up the agenda or I can mention a couple of other items.
Okay. There we go.
So, um, while, um, Jay is with us, I believe, you know, we've, we've talked a little bit about considering the next steps in terms of expansion of study area and what we would be accomplishing, uh, to incorporate the Amelia territory, the one twenty-five corridor now, all the way to Walmart, because when we looked at this first phase, we really ended up, uh, focusing on the western portion. And even though Walmart's another important node, it was disjointed from the rest. So, um, now that we have the Amelia territory, we really need to look at the rest of the, the area that carries us all the way up to the Walmart node um, in our thinking toward the future. Again, this, this community survey is a component to help us, um, to further develop that scope of work. Um, but any other comments that, that Jay or Alan would want to make on that point would be helpful?
Yeah, this is Jay. Uh, all I would say is that, yeah, yeah, we had discussed kind of, you know, what are some options in terms of, uh, the Amelia area? Um, and I think we arrived at, there, we could go in so many different directions from a planning standpoint, from a community engagement standpoint, and maybe we don't know what we don't know yet. You know, that's why we need to get some direction from, you know, from this survey. Uh, and, and hopefully that provides some insight on, you know, if you want to take the next steps with engagement with uh, planning or zoning or, or economic development, whatever that is, um, I, I think this is why we want with the survey first, because, you know, we can do all kinds of studies and plans, but, you know, we, we want something that's, you know, meaningful and, you know, we want to understand what folks want, you know, where they're looking to head and issues, that kind of thing.
Trying to do a lot of plant, trying to do a lot of planning in, 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 in an area like, uh, like Amelia, I think it requires having a pretty good dialogue with the people around, eh, that, that live in that area, and, and I think that's, that's what we really want to have is a good dialogue so that, so that we can make, uh, solid decisions. Because you can make a decision in a vacuum without having that information and it doesn't, it, it won't go well. So I think, I think it just makes sense to lead with, um, you know, with, with asking for, uh, for input.
Alan, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since there is another entity involved in the Village of Amelia, has any discussion been made with Batavia Township about the study that we're doing to get any input from them? Since, you know, we can have one thing on one side of the road, but.
Right.
What are their?
No.
For their side?
Right, no, that's going to be important to do. This step just really is helping us understand, you know, and have, create a dialogue with the, the new residents of Pierce Township. Uh, more than anything, but we've talked quite a bit, um, and ex- and quite extensively about, you know, setting up some meetings and, and saying, you know, once, once we kind of get a better idea of a scope from this, uh, survey, um, then I think we can open up a, a greater dialogue with, uh, with Batavia Township and say, this is what we're hearing from our residents. This is kind of where we're thinking about going, you know, do you want to get on board with us on this or, you know, what do you think is, is important from, from your perspective, but you're right, you can't have, like, for instance, if we discover that, that, um, streetscaping is something that our side really, really wants, um, you can't streetscape just one side of the road and be effective. So, yeah, a- all those things we're going to have to have as a joint effort, but this is more just digging up information for, for our, uh, our purposes at this point. But moving forward, you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I'd add is that Eddie is in regular communication with their zoning department as they've been working on the Amelia zoning hearings and processes. I think he could confirm that and obviously I'm in regular communication with Adele. And as we look at these vacant parcels that we're, uh, receiving the appraisals on, we will constantly be communicating, working together and all of this, um, can be seen in a vacuum. The, these are all interrelated pieces. And the next most obvious piece for us to consider as well is, um, that what's already on the ground and what's happening in the Glen Mary Pondview development area. Eddie, do you have anything else to add in terms of your communication with Batavia Township?
Uh, no, I think it's been covered. I, I agree that it's a very significant component, you know, we don't, we don't want to, to make improvements on one side of the street and then the other side is just a complete, you know, complete one eighty. It wouldn't make any sense. So we, uh, we definitely want to involve them in the conversation. I think they're a really important part and, uh, so far, we, we've had a really good, really good working relationship with them. I think they're on the same page as us, so we'll keep those communication lines open and keep them involved.
So the other point that I have, um, added to the agenda is future tax increment financing districts involving Pondview and the Glen Mary area parcels. So we've had, um, obviously conversations about what was to be the premier tiff, which was never actually executed, uh, while it was in the Village of Amelia. So we're ready to, to move forward, um, if, if you're in agreement, staff can move forward working with Brenda Weimer on those parcels again, as well as the residential parcel. So these would be two different types of tips because one would be residential and the other would be commercial. So she would guide us through that process and if you're agreeable to, uh, authorizing staff to work with her on that, we can see about putting tips in place before there's further development in those areas.
Seems like a good idea to me.
I think filing those as soon as possible would be, would be a good move.
I, I also want to just remind you, well, Bonnie, would you weigh in on that, please?
No, I'm fine with that. I think we should.
I thought silence was agreement. So, and, and also just to say that we do have public hearings coming up, uh, one public hearing, August twenty-sixth for Presswood Tiff number two. So that will be proceeding. All of the documents have been, uh, sent out. The notices have been, uh, delivered to some property owners, certified mail to others, and the notice to the schools went out, certified mail yesterday, so there are many components. There are a couple of other certifications that need to be done prior to the public hearing date, and the narrative has been, uh, revised that I've sent, uh, for review by Brenda Weimer, our attorney. So August twenty-sixth at six thirty P M will be the public hearing on that Presswood Tiff number two. And then the resolution to actually put in place will be considered September the thirtieth at ten E M. So the notices have been prepared for both of those meetings and all of that, um, notice information, the Zoom meetings had to be set up for those. I was very hopeful that we would be back to regular meetings by the time we had these meetings, but I have to assume that they're all going to have to be Zoom meetings still.
All right. Anything else? All right, uh, one more opportunity. Anybody else have any input, public participation here, uh, star nine on your phone or, uh, raise the hand on the participant panel. We'll go ahead and give just a second, see if anybody else has, uh, anything to say. Not seeing anybody. All right, does anybody else, uh, have anything? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Seconded.
This is Bachelor.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Thank you, everybody who attended the meeting today. Our next one looks like it's going to be on August third, a special meeting, public hearing. Take care.
Thank you.